I thought she said it.
Okay. Greetings. And thank you all for joining us here today on this snowy Saturday afternoon. Before we start, I'd like to have you just join me for a moment of silence, recognizing all the deaths we've had in America since we last met here for the annual town meeting, and also in memory of Bill Stickney and Vasco Brevelli, two distinguished Holliston residents that have been an important part of this community who passed very recently. So let's just pause for a few moments to reflect on those losses. Thank you. I'm going to expedite the meeting as best I can, recognizing the fact that you folks are being brave coming out here today, and you have other things to do, but we do have important business today, important funds of the community to spend, and we'll do it with reasonable dispatch. First, prior to Article One, I have the usual suggested motion, move that the following non-residents and non-voting town officials, consultants to committees be allowed to speak during the course of this annual town meeting. And you'll note in the warrant that we've identified some 20-odd individuals who may or may not speak at this town meeting. I've never seen anyone vote against it, so if we have a motion to allow these individuals to speak. Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, then all those in favor say aye. Aye. Now, before we start the meeting, the FinCom has asked for an opportunity to make a brief presentation, which would hopefully eliminate or reduce -- I'm sorry, did Mr. Cronin? Okay, good. Mr. Cronin, the Select Board will address the board, the community first.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris, are we good? We're good. On behalf of the Select Board, I would like to thank everybody who've attended this afternoon. We understand under the conditions, this is quite a commitment, and the moderator has allowed the Select Board the opportunity to present our normal content up to 10 minutes this afternoon. Earlier today, our board, through some discussion, has a consensus to forego that full presentation. When you arrive this afternoon, you should receive a copy of it. We're very proud of the warrant that we put together, and we believe it reflects the priorities of the Town of Holliston in a way that both streamlines the projects and the necessities, but we also recognize there's a lot of money being spent this afternoon. So with that, I would like to just extend my thanks to you and to the employees who put together quite an effort to prepare the warrant and its contents. They did extraordinary work, and I'd especially like to thank Chief Mike Cassidy, who through this pandemic continues to show exemplary leadership in keeping us all safe, as well as our new Town Administrator, Travis Ahern, who put together an exceptional warrant. So with that, we will forego our presentation. Look forward to any questions that folks have throughout this afternoon with regard to any of the items. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Shada?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As you know, I come up here and I give a usual financial detail presentation. I'm going to edit today to make sure that we go as quickly as possible. In fact, I'm going to start my timer to make sure I stay on time. Okay? So let's go. Slide one, please. Oh, I have the clicker. I forgot about that. See which way we go. There we go. Okay. So where are we since July? Our budget to actual is largely on plan. We have free cash certified at $2.6 million. That's down 13%. Our state budget is not final, although it's very close these days, but the current bill that the state is considering funds local aid at the FY '21 level. And if you recall, when I spoke to you in July, I said we were planning on local aid cuts. So because of that, and because of the way the process works in setting the tax rate, we must use the state numbers when we set our tax rate. So that presented us with a little bit of a problem, but I'll get to it in a minute. But the other thing I want to add is that the federal stimulus money expires at the end of the year, and that's important to note because part of our recommendations for today deal with planning for that contingency. Okay? So if you look at everything we have since July, we have about $5 million available for appropriation. That's a result of the state aid adjustment. It's the result of the free cash I just mentioned, and it's because the Board of Assessors released $484,000 from the overlay reserve. The large majority of that is one-time money, so you won't see many adjustments to operational budgets in this, in our recommendations, for the very simple reason that if we were to spend it all on operational issues, we'd have a big problem next year when we're preparing the budgets for fiscal '22. So our recommendations today support four basic things: adjusting the operating budget for the new local aid numbers slightly, increasing reserves, addressing capital projects, and finally helping residents, which I'll get to later in the slides. Okay? Article One covers all the operating budget adjustments we're asking for for today. The Finance Committee recommendation has changed slightly from what was printed in our report. Since that time, we got even more new information, and we changed our recommendation to make the following changes. That's everything you see in Article One as printed except for two lines. The reserve for transfer line, we're changing that number from 40,000 to 190,000, or recommending that we change that to 190,000. And the unemployment line, we're recommending that we reduce from 250,000 to 100,000. So essentially, we're just shifting 150,000 from the unemployment line to the reserve fund line, and I'll talk about that momentarily. Okay? If you look at what we did in Article One or what we're recommending in Article One, there's deferred staffing and compensation adjustments. These were things that we had planned on doing prior to the point where the state had had a budget solidified enough that we could do them. We restored a couple of small deferred items that we felt were essential to the continued operation of the town. We increased the unemployment budget, so even though I just mentioned we're changing the number, that's still $100,000 increase. We just are increasing it less, our new recommendation. And we also boosted our legal costs a little bit. As many of you know, there are some things going on in town that may require increased litigation costs, so we're planning for that up ahead of time. Finally, there's an increase in the reserve fund, which is the second change I told you about, going from 40,000 to adding 190,000, and that's primarily driven by the expiration of federal stimulus money. We boosted the reserve fund before, and now we're looking at the possibility that we may need a little bit more there, so I'll talk about that in a minute. Okay? So when you look at our reserves, we have two primary mechanisms for saving money. One is the stabilization fund. That's basically our permanent rainy day fund. The other is the reserve fund that is the line we were just talking about. That's an annual appropriation we make every May and funds unforeseen or unanticipated expenses during the year. We're limited by statute to do that, so it's not a fund that can be used for any other purpose. The unused funds from that reserve fund get returned to the town at the close of the fiscal year. So in a sense, it's like thinking of it as a temporary reserve that the town has access to, if necessary, prior to a town meeting where you can deal with things like stabilization fund. In July, we recommended that we move 400,000 from our long-term reserve, the stabilization fund, into the short-term reserve fund for the, because of the pandemic was impacting our costs, and we didn't know what the pandemic was going to present until we got to today. So what we're recommending today is that we add 484,000, I mean 848,000, 884, pardon me, to the stabilization fund in Article Three. That's made up of two components. One is 400,000 that we're putting back from what we took in July and moved to the short-term reserve, and the other 484 is this overlay surplus release that I mentioned earlier. So what this means is that we'll have, we'll be growing our stabilization fund during the pandemic, which is actually a very good, positive financially. Okay? The second thing we're doing is recommending that we increase the reserve fund by another 190,000. This is because we got updated information that showed that it's possible we wouldn't have enough if no federal stimulus is passed. And as you know, there's been a lot of talk about a stimulus, but none has happened yet. So with that in mind, we said this is not really a problem because we boosted temporarily, and that gives us the flexibility to deal with a situation where the feds may not come through with any kind of money that helps us, and we have COVID-related expenses because all the current funding runs out at the end of December. So the good news is that if we put it there and we don't need it, we get it back in July. So it's not like we're spending any money. We're just putting it in a different account for the next six months in case the feds decide to do something that harms us financially. We'll be prepared for it. Okay? On the capital side, we're recommending that we put in 1.7 million into the capital expenditure fund, which will make our total appropriation for FY '21 about $3.3 million. The spending recommendations listed in Article Five, which we're behind, include about 1.1 million from the fund and about 105,000 from the free cash, and the only reason for that split is because we weren't sure that some of the items technically qualified as capital expenses under the article, under the definition of our capital expenditure fund, so we're funding it outside of that. There's 418,000 from the capital expenditure fund under Article Seven for the completion of all the work that's been going on in Mudville. That's supposedly the end of it. The water mains have been done, sidewalks, everything are included in this. And with town meeting approval, we'll end up with our capital expenditure fund sitting at just over 7.3 million. Okay? The rest of the articles, I'll go through very quickly. CPC, we said we'd make a recommendation at town meeting just prior to this town meeting. We met, and we heard from the CPC, and we voted to recommend what is printed in the warrant, so we're on board with that. Articles Eight, Nine, and Fifteen, you recall, their planning studies, Eight and Nine were considered last October in 2019, but were not, were postponed, and since then, we've worked with the Select Board, and we've come to a consensus that we're good with proceeding with those studies. Articles Ten, Article Ten is the ongoing replacement of the water mains, right? So that's our annual approval of the next water main project and our ongoing replacement of the water mains. Article Eleven funds the treatment plant. As you recall, a couple of years ago, we voted to bond for that. Since that time, as they finalized the design, there have been some cost changes, and rather than having the town increase the borrowing authority to pay for those, we took some of this one-time money and said, let's just put that towards that project so that we don't have to be bonding an additional $850,000. Okay? Article Twelve is required because we have stormwater compliance requirements, so we have to fund this work. It's kind of ridiculous that they, it's good that we get approval, but on the other hand, we really don't have a choice but to approve that because we need to meet the stormwater regulations. Article Thirteen talks about what to do with Nine Green Street. And finally, Article Fourteen is the Traffic Advisory Committee that says nothing to do with traffic issues per se, other than it's a group of people, including the public safety officials and the Select Board, that meet to discuss issues, signage, and so forth, and there's a little bit of funding we're giving them, or we're recommending that the town appropriate to them to allow them to deal with traffic issues. Finally, we have the Helping Residents piece. Okay? As we stated, as I stated last October when I was here, I said we're paying off Plastino and Miller. That has happened. We paid that off last December. As a result of that, that debt has already come off the tax rate. In addition to that, of that $5 million, the Finance Committee is recommending with our recommendations today that that'll result in a $500,000 reduction in the tax levy from that $5 million. The intent is to help the residents one time during the pandemic, and the reason I say this is because it is a one-time lowering of the tax levy. What this means is that you'll see a change in your tax bill for this year only, but then you might see what you perceive as a larger increase next year because it's one time. But that doesn't mean you're getting a huge spike next year. It means you're paying about a year-and-a-half's worth of increase instead of two years' worth of increase. Okay? The benefit of both will be recognized once we complete this town meeting and the Select Board finishes the tax rate certification process, and you'll see it on your next bill at the end of this month. Now, because this is a revaluation year, and everybody knows their property values have been revalued, and so some people saw increases, decreases, et cetera, I can't universally say anymore that everybody's tax bill will go down because some people's valuations will change. So I'm just softening the statement to say it'll act to offset the normal growth in Prop Two and a Half. What we're basically doing is offsetting the usual annual couple of percent increase in your property taxes for this year only to try to help out residents during the pandemic. Okay? So in summary, and I have ten, I've just finished on time, town meeting approval will have, will have pandemic-proof the budget, increased our stabilization and capital reserves, addressed our planned capital needs, and have relatively flat tax bills versus FY '21 for most residents. So this is a result of the town following our recommendations and giving us their support over the years. We hope you'll do that again tonight or today so that we can all go home safely and hopefully see lower tax bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Let's move to Article One, if we may. This is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, and it's entitled Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Adjustments. To see if the town will vote to raise, and I'm mindful of the fact that you folks have all have the warrant in front of you, but for those folks at home, I'll read most of the articles except for those that are really lengthy or too technical. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of supplementing various accounts for the town's fiscal 2021 annual budget previously voted by the town under Article Fourteen of the warrant of 2020 annual town meeting, or take any action relative thereto. You've heard that the recommendation of the FinCom was to support the article with the following exceptions, which will be noted in the motion, that the reserve fund adjustment will be $190,000 rather than that which was suggested in the warrant article of $40,000, and that the unemployment insurance appropriation will be 100,000 rather than 250,000 that was suggested. The motion is as follows: Move that the town raise and appropriate $563,782 and appropriate $1,018 from the Water Enterprise Fund to modify and supplement the FY '21 omnibus budgets as indicated in the FY '21 total column for the departments listed in the warrant with the following exceptions: the reserve fund, $190,000, and unemployment insurance, $100,000. Is there a second? Now, I'll pause just briefly to allow those in attendance to look at the list of items as published in the warrant. Any discussion? If not, then all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? So voted. Article Two. Sponsored by the Town Administrator, to amend the Consolidated Personnel Bylaw, Section Twenty-Nine, Job Wage and Classification Plan. The article is to see if the town will vote to amend the Consolidated Personnel Bylaw, Section Twenty-Nine, Job and Wage Classification Plan by reflecting those revisions, deletions, and/or additions as set forth below to be effective July 1, 2020, or take any action relative thereto. The motion is move that this article be approved as presented in the warrant. Is there a second? The explanation offered is that the personnel bylaw was updated at the annual town meeting in July 2020. This article reflects the wage and classification plan for town employees not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, no changes to department heads, including full-time, part-time, temporary, seasonal, on-call, and per diem. An IT support position and HR benefit specialists were added to the plan, and adjustment of 1% was made to all wage rates in the table. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? So voted. Article Three, Stabilization Fund, sponsored by the Select Board. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the stabilization fund, or take any action relative thereto. This was unanimously voted by the FinCom on a December 1st vote. The motion is move that the town vote to transfer $484,000 from overlay surplus and raise and appropriate 400,000 to the stabilization fund. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. Microphone, yeah. Step down, please. Just identify yourself first and pose your question, sir. Thank you. Who's this fellow?
Well, good afternoon. Rick Galimore, 785 Central Street. I'm relatively new to town. I've only been here a few years, so forgive that I'm naive to this process, and I just want some clarity so I understand what we're all voting for. You know, a lot of these reference, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money. Can you help me understand what that means? Are we voting to increase the budget to get this money, or is it going to be transferred for somewhere else? Does that make sense?
There are actually two pieces to this.
I'm sorry. Mr. Ahern?
So in the article, obviously, the raise and appropriate would refer to the tax levy from available funds, would refer to coming from reserve accounts, as the motion indicates that 400,000 would be raised and appropriated from the tax levy into the stabilization fund, and 484,000 would come from overlay surplus, which was released by the Board of Assessors earlier this year.
Okay, so when we vote yea, it's either to raise or to transfer. When does that determination happen?
So the motion happened just a moment ago, and the motion would be from $400,000 from raise and appropriate, which is tax levy, and 484,000 from overlay surplus. That just happened with the motion.
Okay.
It's just a, it's a difference between the way the warrant has to be written and then the way that the motion is stated on the floor.
So I guess the FinCom presented the budget for the year. We're voting to add these things to that budget? To modify, so the overall bottom line's not changing, we're just kind of shuffling funds around? Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Any further discussion? If not, then all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? So voted. Article Four, Capital Expenditure Fund, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds a sum of money for the capital expenditure fund, or take any action relative thereto. This was, again, the subject of a unanimous vote, favorable vote by the FinCom. The motion is move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $325,000 and transfer $1,419,775 from free cash to the capital expenditure fund. Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? So voted. A capital budget, sponsored by the Select Board. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money for the purpose of capital expenditures, including replacement of old vehicles and equipment for the following departments: Select Board, Police, Fire, Ambulance, DPW, Perrin's Highway, DPW Facilities, Schools, and authorize the Select Board to trade or sell equipment toward part of the purchase price, or take any action relative thereto. This was voted favorably by the FinCom, six-zero, with Ms. Nocessian absent. The motion is move that the town vote to transfer the following amounts from the following sources: free cash, $105,000 for interior improvements at the library and senior center; capital expenditure fund, 1,000, I strike that, $1,150,316 for all other items listed in the warrant for Article Five, and they're delineated before us. This requires a two-thirds majority because it's a expenditures from the capital fund, and if the votes unanimous, we'll proceed. If it's less than unanimous, requiring a two-thirds vote, we'll have a hand count. All those in favor of the motion? Did I have a second? Is there a second to the motion? Thank you. Any further discussion? Or any discussion, I should say. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? That's voted unanimously. Article Six, Community Preservation Committee Report, sponsored by the Committee Preservation Committee. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $150,000 from the Historic Preservation Reserve for Town Hall Window Repair and Improvements, $85,000 from the Historic Preservation Reserve for the Public Library Front Facade Repairs, $70,000 from the Historic Preservation Reserve for Floor Replacement and Refinishing in Upper Town Hall, and $30,000 from the General Reserve for the same purpose. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $9,999 from the Community Preservation Fund's General Reserve for the purpose of assisting the Holliston Parks and Recreation Department with drainage repairs that started, and to see if the town will vote to appropriate $620 from the Open Space Reserve to build a boardwalk in Wiener Keening Woods, Perrin's Eagle Scout Project, Chris McLean, Boy Scout Troop 73, and our congrats implied in the motion to Chris for that project, to take any action relative thereto. The FinCom reported to you this evening that they had taken a favorable vote on this article before today's meeting. The motion is move that the town vote to appropriate $150,000 from the Historic Preservation Reserve for Town Hall Window Repair and Improvements, $85,000 from the Historic Preservation Reserve for the Public Library Front Facade Repairs, $100,000 from the Historic Preservation Reserve for Floor Replacement and Refinishing in Upper Town Hall. And after that, the town vote to appropriate $9,999 from the Community Preservation Fund's General Reserve for the purpose of assisting the Holliston Parks and Recs Department with drainage repairs that started Park, and that the town vote to appropriate $620 from the Open Space Reserve to build a boardwalk in Wiener Keening Woods, Perrin's Eagle Scout Project, Chris McLean, Boy Scout Troop 73. Is there a second? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye. So those opposed? So voted. Article Seven, Roadway Drainage and Sidewalk Improvement, sponsored by the Select Board. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds $418,000 for the Department of Public Works Highway Division for construction and engineering tasks related to drainage, sidewalk, and roadway rehabilitation on Spring School, Exchange, Union, Mechanic, and Pleasant Streets, also known as Mudville Neighborhood, or take any action relative thereto. The FinCom recommended favorable action. Mr. Alfred abstained, and Ms. Nocessian was absent. The motion is move that the town appropriate $418,000 from the capital expenditure fund for the purpose stated in the warrant. This, again, requires a two-thirds majority vote, seeking to utilize capital expenditure funds for funding purposes. Do I have a second? May I have a second to that motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? And all those opposed? That's unanimous. Article Eight, Sidewalk Prioritization, sponsored by the Select Board. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $40,000 for the purposes of creating a sidewalk asset inventory and prioritization plan, including but not limited to, design, engineering, and construction management and maintenance services, or take any action relative thereto. The FinCom's vote on this article was to support it, six-one, with Ms. Nocessian opposed. The motion is move that the town appropriate $40,000 from free cash for the purpose stated in the warrant. Is there a second? This requires a majority vote. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Cronin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommendation in this article has a condition within it that states it does not currently support the use of this plan as the basis for a large capital expenditure, given other high-priority capital projects. Folks assembled this evening should understand that is not a binding recommendation. It is simply their comment. The Select Board's intention with this item is to, in fact, embrace any and all opportunities that the sidewalk study will present to us, and that could very well include a request for future, future capital requests for that study in the scope that comes with it. We don't want folks to be under the impression that we are trying to hide anything. We intend to look at everything, including state grant programs, as well as your interest in a possible funding program for any possible expansion of sidewalks in our town. So I want to draw your attention to that and act accordingly. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Did I get a second on that? If not, then all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? So voted. I'm going to just have to make a note to myself so I don't start bothering you. Article Nine, sponsored by the Select Board, Water System Modernization Plan, Perrin's Including Source Study. To see if the town will vote to transfer from water retained earnings $75,000 to be expended by the Select Board for the development of a water system modernization plan and to study water source development, or take any action relative thereto. The FinCom recommended favorable action unanimously. The motion is move that the town appropriate $75,000 from water retained earnings for the purpose stated in the warrant. This requires a majority vote. Is there a second to the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? So voted. Water Main Replacement, sponsored by the Select Board. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the Water Infrastructure Fee Fund $2,800,000 for tasks related to the replacement of approximately 10,600 linear feet of water main on Winter Street. The scope of work to include, to also include service connections, valves, fire hydrants, and all related work, or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommend that the town appropriate the $2,800,000. The vote was six-zero-one, with Ms. Zima, who, as I recall, lives on Winter Street, appropriately abstaining. The motion is move that the town appropriate $2,800,000 from the Water Infrastructure Fee Account for the purpose stated in the warrant. Is there a second? Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Hello, Rick Galimore, 785 Central Street. I'm just wondering, was there an event that occurred that created this request? And is there a occurred that created this request? And is there a list of other damaged mains that need repair and a prioritization process for that? Thank you.
And Mr. Cronin?
Thank you for the question. This particular item reflects the, the town's ongoing annual commitment to replace a certain length of water main in our community every year. You pay into a fund that offsets this expense. This particular street has been long targeted for this particular development, so I would consider part of that ongoing plan, and it reflects obviously the degradation of the roadway and the need to replace the water pipe and the roadway. Does that answer your question, sir?
You gotta use a microphone so folks can hear you at home, Mr. Delmore. Thank you.
Is the question, is this part of a larger scale plan?
Yes, and also is it, is there other, is there a list of others that are identified as problems and is, could you identify or detail the process and how you select which ones to pursue?
It's a great question. One of the issues that we're looking to do is to study long-term water pipe replacements. There is a plan within the Highway Department to replace certain water mains throughout the community over the next several years. That information's not with us this evening. If you have a request for that detail, be happy to provide it following meeting. You good? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Any further discussion? If not, then all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? So voted. Article twelve, Water Treatment Plant Supplemental Appropriation is sponsored by the Select Board to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds $850,000 for the Greensand Filtration Facility at Well Number Five from the previous town meeting approved borrowing authorization of 8.375 million Perrin's Article eighteen, May of eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, or take any action relative thereto. The FinCom's recommendation was unanimous in support of this request in this article. The motion is moved that the town appropriate $850,000 from free cash for the purpose of providing supplemental funds for the completion of the water treatment plant as stated in the warrant. Is there a second? Ms. Cronin? It's Article eleven? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cronin. I stand corrected. It's Article eleven. In my haste to get to Article twelve, I jumped over the number. Is there a second to the Article eleven article? Yes, Mr. Aronian, distinguished former selectman. There's a second. Thank you, sir. Any further, any discussion? If not, then all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? So voted. Article twelve, Stormwater Management Engineering Design sponsored by the Select Board to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $92,300 for engineering services related to compliance with the EPA and Master DEP Municipal Stormwater Management Regulations. Funds to be used to develop regulatory mechanism assistance, operations, and maintenance plans, stormwater pollution prevention, stormwater pollution prevention plan preparation, public education assistance, integrated GIS data collection, fieldwork BPM, BMP inspections, and annual report or take any action relative thereto. The FinCom has voted unanimously in support of this article. The motion is moved that the town appropriate $92,300 from free cash for the purpose stated in the warrant. Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? So voted. Article thirteen, Design Engineering for Green Street sponsored again by the Board of, the Select Board to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $54,900 for the cost of designing, engineering, and planning as related to the Nine Green Street property owned by the town from a previous taking, or take any action relative thereto. The FinCom recommends that the town, that the town appropriate 54,900 from free cash. That vote was unanimous. Move that the town appropriate $54,900 from free cash for the purposes stated in the warrant. Is there a second? Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Delmore. You're on my radar screen now, Mr. Delmore. Welcome.
Don't let my questioning-
No, 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 it'd be a dull meeting without you. Go right ahead.
Ricky Delmore, 785 Central Street. I guess, I'm just curious, does the town have a desired end state for Nine Green Street? It talks about destruction and, you know, clearing. There's no details of where what, where does it, where do you guys want it to go? The desired end state.
Yes, Ms. Heine?
I think it's on you. That's a good question. So we had a committee that looked into possible reuse, and in order for us to get to a place where we're considering reuse, we've got to do the work first to address the biggest risk, which is the building itself. And so we're looking to do the design and planning to get the building removed, and then from there we'll go forward with what possible reuse would be. I will tell you that the Nine Green Street Committee made the recommendation to my board, and I was on that committee, made the recommendation that we consider it as a parking lot, that being the best use given the contamination in the, in the area that we, is a known issue that we're looking to address through, again, the design and planning for its future reuse. So parking lot most likely, but that's not a done deal, and that's not what this article is looking to address today. This money is looking to do the design and planning for the removal of, again, that, that sort of risky building that currently exists. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, we have a second on that one. Yeah, if not, then all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? So voted. Article fourteen, Public Safety Signs and Equiments again sponsored by the Select Board to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $52,500 for the purpose of acquiring and installing signs recommended by the Traffic Advisory Committee and/or to fund equipment related to traffic enforcement and regulation as recommended by the Traffic Advisory Committee, TAC, or take any action relative thereto. The vote of the FinCom was favorable, six one with Mr. Alfred opposed. The motion is moved that the town appropriate $52,500 from free cash for the purposes stated in the warrant. Is there a second? Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Heine?
Really briefly, I just wanted to point out that the Traffic Advisory Committee is not just public safety officials nor members of the Select Board. It also includes three residents, so three of your neighbors. One's present here waving in the back there, and one schools committee representative. So it was a committee vote to put this recommendation to the Select Board to consider this article. So again, your neighbors were a part of this decision. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, then all those in favor of the article say aye. Those opposed? So voted. Article fifteen, Traffic and Sound Engineering Studies sponsored by the Select Board to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds $40,000 for the purposes of traffic engineering and sound engineering studies, or take any action relative thereto. The FinCom's vote was favorable on this article, six zero with Ms. Nussessian absent. The motion is moved that the town appropriate $40,000 from free cash for the purpose, purposes stated in the warrant. Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, then all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? So voted. Now, before we get to the last article, I just wanted to say two things lest we adjourn in haste as soon as that article completes. As you'll note from the course of the presentation this evening, there were, virtually all of the articles presented were sponsored by the Board of Selectmen and were supported by the Finance Committee. I think it, it speaks well for us that the, those boards and committees have been able to work hard since the, since the annual town meeting to present to us an agreed upon recommendation in these, respect for these articles, and particularly under these times, we're appreciative that those boards were actively involved in communicating with each other and negotiating and doing whatever they have to do to bring to us a jointly recommended set of recommendations, and I'm appreciative of that. And also, the town meeting has run smoothly. My job is what it is, but it's certainly easy when I'm presented with a concisely, carefully prepared warrant, as we have had the benefit of this evening, and I want to extend my thanks to Travis Ahern, our town administrator, and to Jay Tallaman, our town council, who work hard in advance of this meeting to make sure that what's presented to you is a product that you can read, it's concise, you can understand it, and they, they do us a great service by doing that. I, I want to note my appreciation for that. Yes, go right ahead. You're not going to argue with me, are you?
No, I just wanted to also extend my thanks to Chief Cassidy for all the hard work that he did to put up all these wonderful empty seat placards and to ensure that we had a smooth and healthy experience here. So thank you very much, Chief Cassidy. Thank you to Chris Mayo, our technology director as well. And James Keast as well for putting together the logistics for making this happen, that we wouldn't be here without them. So thank you again.
Great. Thank you, Travis. And again, thanks to all of you folks for joining us here this evening because without you, we can't conduct the town's business. Yes, Ms. Cronin? Barbara, there's a mic right behind you if you can use it. Thank you. This Barbara Gardner going to speak with us.
Thanks. Barbara Gardner, 114 Jennings Road. I just, we've, we've run through this so quickly. I had two comments. One, I wanted to thank the selectmen. I thought the warrant was terrific. There was a lot of really good-
Barbara, 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 Select Board.
Select Board, sorry. Oh, Tina, I'm so sorry.
Barbara, you of all people, me correcting you on a gender issue, huh?
It's an old habit. I'm sorry. I apologize. Select Board.
Apology accepted.
I want to thank them for very good explanations, I think, in the warrant this time. And I also, Article six flew by, and then I realized it said something about the CPC making comments. I know that we've already taken it up, but I just wondered if somebody was here from the CDC and wanted to speak to the recommendations. I don't have any objections, but I wondered, there'd been some discussion about the library and possibly looking at a, a new library, and one of the recommendations was spending money on the existing building.
Okay.
And then my other question for the CDC person is, it's, I may be wrong in this, but it seems that it's been a while that we've used any of the money for affordable housing. And I wondered if that's currently under discussion or under consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Barbara, the article is not technically before us, but in view of your longstanding contributions to the town of Holliston, we're going to call on Mr. Chamberlain to give you the explanation that you deserve. So thank you. Mr. Chamberlain, can you help us with what Barbara's questions are?
Frank Chamberlain, Community, Chair of Community Preservation Committee. I've already, Ken's already given me the warning. I gotta keep this short, so, but we can answer your questions, absolutely. Maybe we'll just go in reverse order. As far as housing or any proposals to the Community Preservation Committee, we're, we're here, we're open for any, any proposals that come before us. We don't generate the proposals. So as far as the current status of the work being done by the Housing Trust or any of the other affordable housing-related organizations or, or committees in town, you know, we, we will entertain any reasonable proposals, but I'm not really in a position to give you an update on their specific programs at the moment. But yeah, we have, what we've been doing over the past few years is giving unrestricted funds or making unrestricted grants to the Housing Trust. That's been our primary focus as far as community preservation funding is concerned, and that has been successful in converting a number of single-family homes recently to affordable units, renovating them and converting them. And I know there is a current project that we were assisting, we associated with funding for, the, on Concord Street, the Habitat for Humanity Project. So there are, there are ongoing efforts. But no, you're correct, there was no request, specific request this, this time around. As far as the other requests are concerned, just very quickly, we've had, we had a request from the Town Facilities Manager for, two requests related to the Town Hall. One will repair and restore the big windows on the upper story, the second floor. As was presented to us, the, the big front window, that, that one right smack dab in the middle, when you look at, look at the front of Town Hall, flexes in and out by about four inches in a rain, in a, in a windstorm. Nothing more than, you know, age and wear and tear. It needs to be tightened up. So, and the other windows need some work as well. So this, the window project will repair and restore those windows in accordance with the restrictions of the preservation easement that's held on the building by the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and at the same time will create and install external storm windows on those windows to protect them from future degradation. Town Hall has served us well for 150 years, and this is one more step to make sure it continues to serve the town. The other Town Hall related function is the, or is the replacement of the floor on the second, on the second story. Town Facilities Manager came to us this, this spring or this fall with the request to refinish the floor initially, and if you, those of you who've been up on, on that second floor of Town Hall know that floor gets a lot of use. It's perceived a lot of use over the years. It's not original to the Town Hall. It probably was installed in the 1920s or 1930s when the surface was used as a basketball court by the town, and it has been refinished many, many times to the point that the nail hits are showing through in various spots at this point. It's been sanded so many times. And it was determined that it really could not affect, the wood is too thin. It could not be effectively be refinished again. So the project was revised slightly, and we will replace the boards, replace the flooring with similar materials. And we looked into the best, the best possible use, the best possible material, the best possible replacement materials in keeping with the building's use as a, building's use and as its, and its status as a historic building, and the determination was the best thing to do is to put back what's there. So that's what we're going to do. And in response to Mrs. Gardner's comment on, on the library, what the, what we're being asked, what we're approving here, the Town Hall Library, the Town Hall, the Town Library, dates from about 1903. It was built for the town by, through a grant from the Carnegie Foundation. People may know that Andrew Carnegie, Carnegie Hall, that, that Carnegie, donated funds for library buildings all over the country, and Holliston was one of those recipients. And so our little Carnegie Library was given to the town by Andrew Carnegie and has served us well. Yeah, there's been talk about replacing it, but right now what we're looking at in this historic building is the front facade is actually separating from the front of the building. It's not, you know, the, the pediment over the, over the main doorway is nothing more than years of weather and freeze-thaw cycles. The stone up at the top is separating. That lets more water in behind it. That's pushing the facade further away. Over time, it's going to create not only damage to the building, there's already been some damage to the stone, but over the time it risks the threat of a, of a collapse and, and injury. So what this will do is repair, replace those stones, reset them, rewater tighten, tighten that facade. Whatever the town decides in future to do with the building, I will, I will mention that that building is part of the grant, as I understand it, for giving that building to the town back in 1903 was that, that, that building would be used for a library. So any, any changes that we make may have to take that into consideration, that, that provision of the grant. So in the meantime, we're going to keep it depending, you know, regardless of what the town decides to do, we're going to keep it in good shape. And just, just real quick on the other two, the $9,000 for the, for the Parks and Recreation Committee or Commission is to create a swale behind the beach at Started Park to keep water from washing the sand that's on the beach out into the lake. And the boardwalk in Wiener Keening Woods for the Boy Scout Project is a way of, it's a, it's the area not too far off of the Mission Springs entrance where there's a wet spot where in the spring you go up to your ankles if you try to use the trails in there, and this will create a floating boardwalk that will, I think it's going to be about, if I'm not mistaken, it's about 36 or 40 feet of boardwalk that'll actually raise people up off the trail. It'll, it'll keep the trail from getting dug up, and it'll make walking in the, in the Wiener Keening Woods a little more pleasant. So if there are any more questions or any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. If not, did I keep it short enough, Ken?
Great, thank you.
All right.
Okay, Frank, thank you. Any, Barbara, you content? Okay, any further discussion? I'm sorry, we're between articles. Let's move to Article sixteen. A spot, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cronin, go right ahead.
Mr. Moderator, thank you for the opportunity. As we pause, hopefully as we begin to adjourn, I just wanted to add two facts. Eight of you showed up today. That's incredible. We thank you very much. We were able to achieve a quorum and then some, but clearly the elements and the conditions dictated a smaller amount of us to journey for this purpose than normal. So thank you again. If you didn't watch our meeting this past week, one of the things we wanted to alert people about is, in the event there's any sense of pandemic impact from this meeting, through Chief Cassidy and the work of contact tracing, we will be able to hopefully contain and- and identify any such outbreak or conditions that might emanate from this meeting. We did the same thing in July. There were, there were no transmissions. So it's part of what we're doing internally as a community to make sure everybody's safe. We wanted to let you know that before you adjourn tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Article sixteen. Road Acceptance is sponsored by the Select Board to see if the town will vote to accept as public ways Hopping Brook Road from Station Zero Plus Zero Zero to Station Forty Plus Ninety Three Point O Two, and Boynton Road in the Hopping Brook Definitive Subdivision is shown on the plan entitled Roadway Acceptance Plan in Holliston, Mass. dated October 18, two thousand and one, revised through December, two thousand and two, prepared by Schofield Brothers of New England, Inc., Deer Run, Station Zero Plus Zero Zero to Station Six Plus Seventy Seven Point Four Three, and the Cortland Square Subdivision, Cortland Square Definitive Subdivision is shown on a plan entitled Acceptance Plan Deer Run, Holliston, Mass. dated September 20, two thousand and 11, prepared by GLM Engineering Consultants, Inc. And Indian Ridge Road South, Station Zero Plus Twenty Five to Zero Plus Fifty One Point Fifty Five, and the Clearview Estates Two Subdivision is shown on a plan entitled Street Acceptance, Indian Ridge South, formerly James Road, Clearview Estates Two, in Holliston, Mass. dated March 13, two fourteen, prepared by Gary and Hellman. Such ways having been laid out as townways by the Select Board and will further vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by donation, purchase, or eminent domain rights sufficient to use Hopping Brook Road, Boynton Road, Deer Run, and Indian Ridge Road for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Holliston, or take any action relative thereto. The selected, the motion is as follows. Move to accept the street acceptances as printed in the warrant and to authorize the Select Board to take any and all actions associated therewith, including the acceptance of deeds and a pertinent easements with respect thereto. Is there a second? This may in the future involve, have the potential for eminent domain, so we're gonna require a two-thirds vote. We'll see if it's unanimous and proceed from there. All those in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted. Mr. Aronian, do you have a motion? Is there a second? All those in favor? So voted. Thank you. Good night. So good day, good day.